Good evening, this is Peter Casper. Welcome to those of you joining online or will be viewing us later at a later time. Thank you for those that are joining us in person. I like to call the Board of Selectment's regular meeting for March 6, 2025, order at 7:00 PM. We do have the entire board present. Those that are able, please, if you could please join me and say we pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Moves us to Section 3 of the agenda, which is additions and changes to the agenda. Mr. Tierney, anything from the town? Board. Okay, moves us to Section 4, which is public comment. For those that might be joining us for the first time remotely, since I see some familiar faces out here in person, this section of the agenda is reserved for persons that attend to wish to briefly address the Board of Selectment. The Board requests that a person's comments be limited to a single period lasting three minutes or less. While the Board respects the right of the public to provide comment, this time is not intended for open discussion or board response. Residents who wish to request a dialogue should simply make arrangements in the Town Manager's office. Obviously, welcome to call me directly or speaking for the balance of the Board. Reach out to any member of the Board, because we would be happy to to meet with you and discuss any topic that you wish to discuss relative to the town's business. So is there anybody down online who wishes to offer a public comment?
There's no one with a comment right now. We have a lot of guests tonight.
Folks, okay. Thank you very much. There is, as a reminder, a section at the end for public comments. So if someone wishes to to add a comment then, we move through the agenda, you will be welcome to do so at that time. Mr. Tierney, Section 5, good to know, special recognition.
Yes, we do have a lively topic tonight. We have the Hebron Maple Fest, which is soon going to kick off 2025, and we have some guests here to speak to that.
Okay, awesome.
And my ex, I stand over here by the TV. That's where the camera will.
Exactly what I need, the camera to pick me up. Hello, everybody. Thank you so much for having us. I know it's a crazy time of the month or the year for all of you. I'd like to start out talking a little bit about the Town Center Project and then end with the Maple Festival. So the Town Center Project 2025 is working on our ninth year of working with the town of Hebron, trying to create an environment that is see, eat, and do. We've been working very hard at that. We've established a number of art installations along Main Street. We've established a couple of subcommittees, the Hebron Community Chorus, just added Hebron Community, Hebron Collective, yes, Creative Collective, the Hebron Creative Collective and Art Association. And so we're broadening our scopes. We're trying to incorporate a little bit more of our community. We are still hosting all of our lovely events. Give you guys all of our rack card. Thank you. Please put it on your refrigerator. Please plan to participate. You have a full lineup as every year of all of our events. Donna, you have plenty of these, I know. I guess that really kind of sums up the Town Center Project. I think I need anything else about that. Maple Festival this year has been amazing. I'm not going to stand here and tell you that I own any of the credit, because I've been in Florida. But Donna and Wendy Winegarten and Candace Seguza have really steered the ship and maintained a lovely environment. If you participate in any of the meetings on Saturday morning at the Douglas Library, which have been commencing since January, you'll understand that feel. We have about 20 different community members that are there, and they're just active and gorgacious, and just, it's really wonderful. So we have our Maple Festival booklet hot off of the press. You guys saw one of those. And again, you know, I know I'll see you all there.
Yes.
Some some shape, way, or form. Yeah. Yeah, so some highlights to Maple Festival. Yukon Timber Team is going to be at Woody Acres for both days, Saturday and Sunday. Farmer's Farmer's Cow Maple Leaf Farms brings their employee of the month, Chuenzles, which is always fun for the littles to see the cows and such. Maple Leaf has opened up their farm for farm tours this year, as they did last year, which brings back a very great agricultural feel to the event. Downtown is loaded with curated artisans. All free activities, which is very, just something that the Town Center Project really strives to do. Strive very hard to make sure that all of our activities are free. Just going to roll me right into Maple by Moonlight, just the Town Center Projects fundraiser that we host during Maple Festival. All of the funds that come from that support the concert series. They support the Make Music Day. They support our art installations, the beautiful Adirondack Chairs downtown.
You go ahead.
Okay. Sorry. Yeah, so anyhow, that's going to be on Friday, Friday evening. We hope to see all of you there at that as well. Very informal. It's at Colebrooks. They put on an amazing spread for us. We have a little tagline that's fancy flannel or formal. A lot of people ask, what's fancy flannel? We like to respond with clean.
I have that.
Yeah, just clean. That's all that's necessary. But yeah, it's a lovely event. It's all community. It's just fun. I mean, that really kind of wraps up my presentation. You guys got any questions for me?
So that's all in here?
It's all in there. Yeah, there's two pages of activities and food and craziness.
I just want to thank you and your people for taking this over. I can remember, I've been around, of course, since its inception, back during Selden Wells and Craig Seer and all that. And, you know, it's, at one point, it really was starting to wane, and you people have just picked it up and done a wonderful, incredible job to give it new life.
We will definitely pass that on. Thank you.
Well, I have a comment. If, for those that may be watching that haven't been, please, please come out. It's a wonderful event. And also echoing Dan's comment said, this is another indication of what a small group of dedicated, passionate residents can do to make a difference in our community. So please, please volunteer. Please join us in helping continuing to make this a wonderful community. But this is another great example of what a small group really can do to make this town special. So thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Town Center Project is wonderful. So thank you.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Charlie.
Excellent. Thank you. All right. Mr. Tierney, Section 6, appointments and resignations.
We have a few.
We do.
First off would be amplify catchment area 15 Board of Directors appointment. Attach as correspondence from Roslyn, Roslyn, send check, D, expressing interest in being appointed to Hebron representative to the catchment area 15, Council 15, for amplify North Central Region Mental Health Board in their letters attached.
Okay, let's read the motion. We'll open it up for any discussion. Dan, would you?
Sure. Move the Hebron Board of Selectmen, appoint Rosalie, submit check, as Hebron's representative to the catchment area Council 15 for amplify North Central Regional Mental Health Board.
The motion's been read. Any discussion? Do you know, need for discussion, or move it to vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay. But please note if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Thank you, Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Rosalie, thank you so much for your willingness to volunteer. That moves us, Mr. Tierney, P.
Yes, the one to be in this agenda is Central Regional Tourism District Board of Directors appointment. Attach as correspondence from Michelle Nicholson, D, expressing interest in serving as Hebron representative to the Central Regional Tourism Board of Directors.
Tiffany, if you would be so kind.
Sure. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Michelle Nicholson as Hebron's representative to the Central Regional Tourism District Board of Directors for a three-year term.
Motion's been read. Any, just on the discussion, anyone wish to discuss the matter? Okay, no need for discussion. We're going to move on to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Thank you, Keith.
Keith Pettit, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. And thank you, Michelle, for all that you do and your willingness to step up. Thank you very much. Mr. Tierney, C.
I am seized. Board of Assessment Appeal, alternate appointment. Attach as correspondence from Janet Fedasky and T, expressing interest in being appointed as an alternate to the Board of Assessment Appeals.
Okay. Claudia, would you be so kind as to read the motion?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen appoint Janet Fedasky as an alternate to the Board of Assessment Appeals for a term to run until November 2027.
Thank you. We'll open it up for discussion before I do so. Yeah, thank you so much for continuing to volunteer and not giving me. No, 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 no. I said before, I really appreciate all those that are willing to step up, but let's open it up for discussion. So I know you, in essence, you had raised the question.
Yes.
Of being able to serve on two boards and what, if any conflict that may develop. So why don't we open it up for some discussion on that, just?
Yeah, I, I agree. You know, I share the same concerns as someone who has, you know, taken positions and had to step off of boards due to conflict of interest. Like, even when, you know, the opportunity for conflict is very small, I always like to make sure that the public, there's, there's no possible reason of doubt that when I'm making a decision, it's, it's objective and it's, it's without, you know, trying to increase, you know, influence in one way or another. And so with this, because they both do deal with real estate, you know, I know that we can give the exception, and thank you, Janet, for volunteering, because we don't have enough volunteers in this town to kind of cover all the things that we need to cover. You know, I would be hesitant to grant the exception without additional highlights or restrictions on, on, you know, abstaining from votes. Whereas like, if there is someone who either recently or is actively involved in one board, and it comes before the other board, that she abstain. Because I don't think that, I don't want to see any conflict between votes on the boards resulting in any, you know, I don't want the public to think that she may be playing sides, even though I'm sure you're not, believe me. But it's just, especially when people don't, don't get what they want, they always say that it's someone else's the problem, you know? And I don't want, especially someone with Janet's, you know, history and track record in town, to be called into question about one of her, her votes on a board. You know, that's not a good position to be put in.
So there's a note, Dan, and I'm sure, because you're a veteran, I've served with you. So give me, let's let the board finish, and then I do want to hear a little bit from you, if you don't, if you want, if you want. Other, other board members' comments.
Just a question. I mean, is, this is a board that has struggled to get people on it, right? And so I hear you, Keith, but this is a board that is struggling to even meet to do its basic function. I guess, I'm just curious, is there additional information we can get on? Is this, like, you know, like, from a legal perspective, does this, like, does it happen frequently? Does it, you know, I just, I don't know, some additional info or context might be helpful.
It's allowable for the charter, but the charter says the Board of Select would have to approve it. It's not, Donna can phrase it even better if she looked it up. But like Keith said, it's different, certain boards and commissions. This one is, it is what it is, and for what you stated, but Keith's also got a point there, too. And that happens if somebody doesn't get what they want. Next thing you know, there is to perception that that's there because of a conflict. Right then. The only one that could, you know, recluse themselves would be Janet herself as a member if she was seated. But if you want to get a legal opinion from the town attorney, we can do that.
Offering it out there if anybody's interested. I mean, I don't want to expend money. We don't have to, but I just, I don't know.
I think Keith makes a good point, not only out of respect for Janet, and also just the perception, when someone doesn't get what they want. We don't want there to be any concern there. So to me, it might make sense to at least explore that as, let's make sure, because they are related, potentially, or property based, and maybe getting an opinion. It probably isn't, my opinion is not a bad idea. I think it's a good idea. Because again, that's, if everything goes smooth, no problem, but it's going to be that one thing in two years from now, and somebody doesn't get what they want, and all of a sudden, they're pointing fingers. But your thoughts, Claudia?
The only thing I would say is, as far as, as people, the public, and perceptions and opinions are always going to be there, regardless of what boards you're on, how many boards you're on, the decisions that you make, there's always going to be someone who's not going to be happy, and maybe express a negative opinion. Number one, my second point is, I know Janet, I've worked with Janet. She has 1,000% credibility, and I believe that she will always make the right decision when it comes to that. So I, I really don't have a hesitation of, honestly.
Do you have anything else to add?
Okay.
You don't have to.
Yeah, no, I mean, I'm, it was so easy when I didn't realize that she was already on another board. You know, and I was on the Board of Selectmen where you had a person that was actually trying to run, and that got elected to a second board, of which there was definitely a conflict of interest. And, you know, that's why I think a person should only be on one board at a time. That being said, this is an alternate position. So that position, she would only get utilized at that point in time if, you know, the other members did not show up.
I think Mr. The key, Mr. Pettit mentioned that as a reminder is, the reason you're needed is because you're needed, you know, so, because the members aren't showing up, right? So, so if I made the instance we're talking about, because this is, obviously, your, your interest, Janet, has always been in the best interest of town. Again, I've served with you, so I have no hesitation about you personally. But you expressed some concern about the two boards. Were you thinking about that potential conflict?
I mean, I was. I was, yes. I know there's a, there's a need. I have the background from being on both boards. I just thought that maybe you could correct me. I just thought they, they sort of did two different things. Yeah, you know, one is, you know, subdivisions and approving things going into the town and stuff. And this is more of a tax thing, you know? Your house was assessed at $300,000. You think it should be assessed at $200,000, and these are your reasons why. I guess I didn't think there was that much real overlap.
Yeah, and I don't think that there will be. I think that the, the, the potential for overlap is very small. But I can see a scenario where someone comes to planning and zoning and says, I want to build a shed in my backyard, and I need a permit for it. Planning and zoning gives the variance to have the shed next to the property line, but now the shed is not on footings. So now they come before Board of Assessment Appeals, because it's not a shed, it's a temporary building. Right? So I can see, again, it's, it's not going to happen often, which is why I think we can get away, and you are needed, believe me. And I have, I have no, I have no question or qualms about your personal integrity. I know, just like all the other board members, that you are here for, for the benefit of the town, and we appreciate that. I just want to make sure that we, we put out there that, you know, this is with the intention, and so the public understands that if that weird scenario comes up, she will remove herself from the situation.
Okay, so why don't we do this?
Or my, my other thought would be, if planning and zoning refuses somebody, and then they come before Assessment Appeals, saying they wanted a reduced rate because you did not grant them the, that would probably be a more likely, you know, or I want tax rebate or whatever, because you didn't do X, Y, Z.
Let's, let's, here's a suggestion. Here's a suggestion. To protect the town and Janet as well, I would, I would be comfortable with your suggestion of at least approaching council to say, is there any potential perceived conflict of interest that could put the town and/or the member at some potential future risk? So at least ask the question. And, and then if, if he says it would be rare, and I think I'd be comfortable, because I think what you're hearing from the board is that personally, you know, obviously, we have no issue supporting Janet, but we want to protect her and the town from a potential.
If you don't want to be a river race, sorry.
Yeah.
The town's always in the river race, right?
No, not ever.
I think that's the point, is let's take, let's take precautionary measure, let's double check to protect you and the town. We don't want any distraction if there is some issue later. And then the question back to the attorney is if, if there's one or two scenarios that he says there could be a conflict, let's articulate that specifically in discussions to make sure she would be then comfortable with when she has to recuse herself potentially.
Now, I have to tell you, so they're meeting this week. I'm, one of the meetings I couldn't make anyway. But they're meeting this week, and then they don't meet again until September. That's one of the reasons I, I was interested. They only meet like three or four times a year. So you do have till September, I mean, you know, this week is gone. So you do have till September, if you haven't gotten somebody else, reach out back to me. And that, we can do it that way, too.
Yeah, but your knowledge and your background, especially in the financial world, would be so key in this position.
Yeah, let's just make sure.
If they're not meeting, then you have that.
We've got time, and let's make sure, again.
It's not like they meet every month.
You're protected. We are, we brought our concerns to make sure, again, you're protected, the town's protected. We don't have to worry about it when there is that potential conflict. Based on that information, we know how to find you.
We know where you live.
Yeah, exactly.
If you're comfortable with that, I would suggest we keep it as all business.
See if other people show up, and then you can, you can, you know, if you name me in September, give me a, give me time, though, to be able to go to the book.
Yes, we'll, we'll try to get the answer this quickly, so at least we can move forward quickly. So again, if there's no issues, I think you're hearing that there's going to be support.
But I can see, especially the thing Dan pointed out.
Yeah, no, both, yeah.
You know, those are valid points, and that was why I wanted to bring it up. I didn't want to just say, oh, hey, I'm hearing it.
As always, you're, you're front and center on how to help the town. So, thank you. Let you serve as inspiration for those that are watching. Please, please. But thank you very much.
Pick the rock, pick the boards.
Take the board that aligns with your interests and all that sort of stuff. But thank you for, for your patience and understanding, and obviously, your willingness to step up.
That's why I wanted to.
Thank you. Thank, thanks for coming to town. Thank you so much.
So can we table the motion until next?
Yes, yes. Works for me.
Yeah. Long as I hear back from them.
And if we don't hear from the attorney, we'll, we'll keep it as all business.
Yeah, you have till September.
Okay, we'll keep it as all business, and when it's appropriate, you can last up on it. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
See other people who will step up, you know.
Well, we can hope.
Oh, I see the floodgates at the door.
I know. I don't understand why. It's actually, I mean, to the town, it's a lot of fun, in a crazy way.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it. All right, Mr. Tierney, that moves us to 7 on agenda, which is the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've been approached by the WPCA. This has been going on for a while. They bought a plaque in Claire O'Brien's memory, you know, long-term public service in many capacities. And they have the plaque here. So my question would be to the Board of Selectmen tonight. They didn't really want to hang it on a home station or something like that, so it's a decent sized plaque. They were hoping that we could find an area within the town hall to hang the plaque, possibly in the hallway or something like that. I told them I would bring it up to the Board of Selectmen if that was something that they would consider or agreeable to. We would invite the family and have the plaque and the WPCA at the next meeting, which they're gonna, they're gonna be at the next meeting, or they're gonna be at the next budget meeting. But I talked to Chris Hamburger, who's running the WPCA. There they were.
Their, I think, is on the next mission. Dave O'Brien's.
Okay, yeah, that's, that's what I was getting at. So they would be here for that anyways. So they were hoping that that's something we could, Board of Selectmen could approve, and I, I think you guys need to discuss that.
Anyone discreet with displaying the plaque?
No, and she, you know, Clara was not only a select person, but she was also involved, I believe, with the WPCA since its inception.
Since its inception, I think.
You know, you know, and, you know, it's literally, I'm not sure how many years, but it's just nice to somehow show the community, you know, those people that have kind of put in more than their, you know, normal, just per amount of board type thing. So I don't have a problem with it.
Anybody, anybody concerned with displaying the plaque?
You got this, Hannah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, it was, it was a very small raise.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, thank you for noticing.
No, I, I think there's a couple of things here that I'm trying to be sensitive to, but at the same time, get a larger point across, so I'll walk you through it. I agree. I think, you know, it's good for the family and good for WPCA to see us to display it. And I would like it displayed at Town Hall. I think we need to be, I, I would be mindful of how permanent of a display it is, because honestly, we're getting ready to build a gigantic, beautiful, brand-new Public Works Department where it could be displayed much better, and, you know, in a nice, permanent fixture. I would, again, I'm not saying it shouldn't be displayed here, because I think it needs to, it needs to not wait the two years for the other building to be built. I would like to see it, it displayed, but maybe let's not think of literally setting it in stone. Let's just display it and then set it in stone in the new building. That's just my, just throwing it out there for suggestion.
All the way works for me. Yeah.
I think we're in agreement that we'll find to have it displayed, and if at some point there's a better place to display it, then we'll talk about it at that point. Are you comfortable with that, Eddie?
Makes a lot of sense.
Okay, let's go ahead with that. Thank you.
Thank you for that. So we had a little glitch with the traffic lights. Those were supposed to be turned on on Monday. They did try to turn them on, but there was an issue that should be hopefully resolved this Wednesday coming up. Once they get those energized, they have to go on a flash period for a certain amount of time before they can actually be totally functional. So, thank you. Keep our fingers crossed. We continue to work on that. Did have our ocean meeting, and the fines were reduced by half, so that $6,000, whatever dollar fine is now $3,115. And the only outstanding items we have for correction are some training, I believe, and some new policies that have to be instituted. And Ocean's gonna actually come out and assist with a little bit of that, because some of the stuff is fairly new, and there's not a lot of other. We've asked a couple of other towns, and they were unawares, as we were, some of the stuff, so. So that went as well as could be expected. And you have the presentation for Maple Fest, so really don't need to get into that, but it is March 15th and 16th. And the Lions will be having their pancake breakfast that weekend as well. So hopefully, the, we have good weather and everybody, it warms up a little bit, and we can count the different breeds of dogs again.
That's the best.
On a more somber note, we, we lost the motor in one of our ambulances. So it's a kind of tough situation. It was not a really popular engine, but that's the engine that's in there, and that's the engine we have to put back in there. So we made the decision today, we got a couple of calls. We looked around for a used ambulance, leasing an ambulance, a lot of those options are in place. And there's no new ambulance that's readily available. So it's going to be about a $30,000 to $40,000 engine replacement of that. The silver, if there's any silver lining at all, we bought that ambulance from Bosra Used, and I think we paid $30,000 for it when we bought it, and then we upgraded it what, what we want. So we put another 40 to 50 into it, but a new ambulance, just for your information, is around $250,000. So we'll put a motor in this one. It comes with a two-year warranty on the new motor, it's a 6.5 Ford, so that's not a real, terrible, that's not a real popular, they made it for like one year, and then they realized that, that's.
It's too expensive?
No, it just wasn't, it wasn't a real good design.
That's just for an engine. I'm in the wrong business.
So we saved some money when we bought it, so the money we saved is now.
Is there other, another replacement of motor that's more readily accessible?
Not that we know of. The only thing I can say to you about that, Dan, is, is because it was such a bad year for that motor, the new crate motor we're getting, they did the upgrades to that motor, so they kind of worked the kinks out of those bad motors. So if we go to the, we go to the junkyard, you're still going to work salvage ration. And replace, you still don't know what you have.
True. How many miles on that motor that we lost?
I don't have that information.
And I just wondered, is that motor something that you would typically get, like 300,000 miles on? I mean, I don't know anything about motors, but.
Well, it's, it's another thing with emergency vehicles, the mileage is nothing on it. Because, you know, that's why I'm hesitant about getting surplus police vehicles. Because, you know, that's why I'm hesitant about getting surplus police vehicles. Because the mileage on it is ninety thousand miles, but the engine probably has about seven hundred thousand on it because they idle it for ten to twelve hours a day. So it's, it's.
Okay.
You can't really go by mileage with.
I got, well, there you go, tells you I don't know anything about it. But I'm just trying to think, you know, do we get our, you know, do we get good mileage out of it and are we, can we expect this to last? I know the two-year warranty, but can you expect it to last, you know, ten years?
Right.
Well, that. As opposed to the mileage.
So ambulance is slated for.
Yeah, so I just wanted to answer that question. So if you were to order an ambulance today, it takes two-year build time. There's, there's an ambulance in the two thousand twenty-six, twenty-seven budget to replace this ambulance anyways. But we're in the business of safety and emergency.
We have to have a motor in the ambulance.
It's about a month, that's how we get the engine in and into the vehicle, so it's about a month turnaround where we, other than trying to borrow somebody's ambulance.
Within, within literally two or three years, that ambulance is slated for replacement. So if we get a two-year warranty on, on the new motor, it's going to almost run to the point when we be ordering the new ambulance to replace it anyways.
But ordering, not to beat this, but, but having now a new motors, does that suggest we don't have to order a new ambulance two, two years from now? I'm just.
Possible.
Well, I'm, I didn't.
They have to pass an inspection. It depends on the inspection. Because just to show that we've, we're thinking outside the box, one of the images we retired to the police department for the fire police that's now down at the garage. We, I said, can we refit that? He said, no, it won't pass inspection, so there's.
Yeah, I know you're on it, I'm just interested.
Yeah.
Just sort of interested, I'm not questioning, I'm just sort of trying to inform myself as to how this stuff goes. Okay. Thank you.
Uh, that's, that's what I have for the Town Manager's Report.
Thank you. That moves to section eight on the agenda, which is all business, item eight A, as noted by the addresses, is not intended for an update done unless there's anything you had. American Rescue, I think.
We are just working away at the project.
All right, so B, eight B, I'll just take the liberty since that is my section, Department of Public Works Action Committee update, that is eight B. What is noted in, in the agenda is, is the update, the cost proposals due on March fourteenth and interviews conducted with four qualifying architectural firms that were selected on the seventeenth and the nineteenth of March. Uh, so that was consistent with the update last meeting, but that's articulated in the document that's on the screen. Uh, so at this juncture, I don't have anything additional over there. So I'll turn it over to Tiffany and or Keith, an update on old business eight C, which is the Town Manager's Annual Evaluation.
Sure, so we, thank you to all the selectmen who gave us their reviews, their evaluations. We've tabulated the comments and the scores, and so the next step will be to have an executive session at our next meeting to discuss the findings and go from there. So I would recommend that an executive session gets put on the next agenda.
Let's plan for that. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, Mr. Tierney, eight D, any other old business you wish to bring before the board?
I do not.
Or anything that hasn't been discussed? Okay, that moves us to section nine on our agenda, which is new business. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Tierney, discuss nine A.
Yes, we also have our senior center coordinator here, Sharon. And this is something we do annually, it's the N C triple A grants for Central Area Agency on Aging. N C triple A Hebron Outreach and Social Support Services Project Grant Application, and then there's a motion.
So let's do this, let's read the motion and then we'll, we'll listen to Sharon and then open it for discussion. Keith, would you like to read the motion?
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the grant application in the amount of twenty-four thousand dollars with sixty thousand two hundred and thirty-two dollars in-kind matching funds from the Hebron Senior Center Budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five North Central Area Agency on Aging Incorporated, Hebron Outreach, Information, Assistance and Referral, and Social Support Services Project Grant. And authorize Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney to apply for, accept and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents.
Mr. Tierney, do you want Sharon to make a comment before we open up for any possible discussion?
Absolutely.
Sharon.
Taking the time to join us.
Yes, thanks for joining us, as always.
Hi, thank you for having me. So I think just one of the things that I wanted to mention was the changes in the population. I had become the Senior Services Director in two thousand oh five. And at that time, the entire senior population, and according to the Area Agency on Aging, senior is sixty and up, was one thousand three hundred seventy-nine. It's now four thousand three hundred seventy-one. So again, a significant jump in the senior population. The group that primarily is targeted for the outreach services is that eighty-plus population. Because they tend to be the population now in need of resources, coordination of services, et cetera. And again, in two thousand oh five, the seventy-plus population was one seventy-seven, and now it is eight twenty-five. So again, a significant change. And just to give you a little vignette that, to demonstrate the impact that outreach can have. There's an older couple, and both with quite a few health problems that then result in quite a few prescriptions. There is a program that we were able to link them with. And for her, her prescriptions would have run nine hundred seventy-two dollars and change for the year. Through this program, they'll run a hundred and two dollars and change. For him, his prescriptions would have run one thousand thirty-three and change, and with this program, one seventy-five and change. So again, making a significant impact on their, their living situation. So again, that's just one, one example that I wanted to share.
Thank you very much. Uh, discussion from the board. Okay, motions are read. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If you are opposed, nay. Or please note if you wish to abstain.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Steve Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Tierney, nine D, please.
Nine D, Sharon's on the screen again, this is approved Senior Centers North Central Area Agency on Aging, Inc., Hebron Therapeutic Activity and Health Promotion Program Grant Application with a motion.
I'll read the motion then, while Sharon provides the context, if she's willing to do that, because we appreciate that, and then open up for discussion. Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the grant application in the amount of ten thousand eight hundred dollars with sixty-two thousand eight hundred and eighty-six dollars in-kind matching funds from the Senior Center Budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five North Central Area Agency on Aging Incorporated, Hebron Therapeutic Activity and Health Promotion Program Grant. And authorize Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney to apply for, accept and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents. Sharon, I turn it over to you for some additional context.
So I think I just want to commend our program coordinator, Mandy Rosniak, for the programs that she puts together, especially to the physical activity programs, and we have just superb instructors for these programs. So again, people not only get the physical benefit, but there's that camaraderie that people have. We've had members of some of the exercise groups encounter some significant life-changing conditions, and again, they are able to rally around one another, so it's, it's not just attending an exercise class.
If you have any discussion from the board? During none, I will move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye, or opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Steve Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously. Mr. Tierney, that moves us to nine C.
It's again Sharon on the hot seat. Approved Senior Center North Central Area Agency of Aging, Inc., Hebron Transportation Services Grant Application with a proposed motion.
Okay, so we'll read the motion. I'll turn to Tiffany, ask her, please.
Move that the Hebron Board of Selectmen approved the grant application in the amount of seventy-two thousand dollars with ninety-eight thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars in-kind matching funds from the Hebron Band Budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five North Central Area Agency on Aging, Inc., Hebron Transportation Services Grant. And authorize Town Manager Andrew J. Tierney to apply for, accept and receive this grant and to sign any necessary documents.
Okay, so just because we're having so much fun with Sharon, if you wish to comment.
So I'm just going to tell you that we have wonderful dedicated drivers. And again, in two thousand oh five, when I came on board, we had one handicapped accessible bus and one car. And we now have three handicapped accessible buses and a car. And again, as you know, because you've entertained the grants that I've written for the buses, buses have all been acquired through federal grants. So again, our transportation system has, has just grown as the population has grown. And I'm just going to give you one little vignette. We had a woman recently, it was right after the snow and ice storm. She is wheelchair-bound. Her doctor was fearful that she had a clot in her leg, which as you know, a clot can travel and be fatal, or, you know, could have resulted in her losing her leg. So she needed to go for a procedure, you know, as soon as possible. The condition of her driveway was not safe for our vehicle, our drivers, for her. And so we worked with a local agency and got her driveway tended to and we're, and we were able to take her to her, her appointment that she needed to go to. So again, we take our obligation to transport seniors extremely seriously.
Thank you, and thank you for all that you do, clearly for such an important demographic of our community. Any discussion?
I have a general question.
Go ahead.
So as far as you did mention that the population has grown.
Yep.
And along that, the needs have also grown. Can you tell us a little bit about sort of like those pressures that you all are feeling as staff members for those services that are so needed? And how are you handling all that?
So again, the, the volume has, has grown in terms of the number of people needing to be linked with such programs as the Connecticut Home Care Program for Elders, the National Family Caregiver Support Program, the Alzheimer's Respite Program, the, the program that I mentioned to you in terms of helping people with prescriptions. So again, I think that we really need to be knowledgeable of all of the resources in our bag because it isn't a one-size-fits-all, it's often putting all the piece, puzzle pieces together to try to find the best services that will fit the need of the senior. And again, years ago, we had a part-time social worker. We then graduated to a full-time social worker. The social worker who we have now, who's been with us for the past six months is fabulous. And the, you know, the need now for a, a full-time social worker is, is mandatory.
Thank you.
Did you, someone else said something?
I did. Yeah, I just, I just wanted to go and again, say thank you, you and your staff. Again, another example of our town's incredible dedicated employees. You know, we, we give a lot of accolades to the highway department and, and deservedly so. But this is a, a group that you don't necessarily see unless you're involved with the seniors population and equally dedicated and, you know, just the, the work that goes into doing these grants is, is again testament to the hours that, that they put into making our community better. So again, thank you and your staff.
Thank you.
I knew I shouldn't, just because he took my comment.
I tend to didn't listen to Dan, but to Keith.
No, actually, I, I, I waited till the end because, you know, there are three grants and, and, you know, Sharon, thank you for everything that you do, both for the elderly community in, in our town and also for helping get all this stuff together. You know, th- these grants, a lot of effort goes into them. And, you know, we get a lot of money that multiplies the effect of taxes within the town. And, and I think people really need to realize, you know, how much work that, that they're putting in so that people, you know, get more benefits without having to pay all the extra taxes. And, and the other thing, you know, going through some of these grant documents, because I actually do find some of them fascinating. It was surprising to me how many of the employees are actually over sixty that are providing the services for the over sixty population. I, I believe there was only three people out of like fifteen that were under sixty. And so, you know, thank you again for our dedicated employees and, and thank you for helping out. Like you said, this is a growing portion of our population and we want to make sure that they enjoy the town of Hebron, you know, for the rest of their lives and, and that things are still accessible to them and they're able to, to live here with a certain standard of living that, that we're all accustomed to. So thank you for all the work that you put in. I appreciate it and I know that the rest of the population does as well.
Thank you. And again, it's, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to do it without the wonderful staff that I have.
Great, all right. Thank you for that discussion and the motion has been read. Let's move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. If you're opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain.
Uh, Dale Larson, aye.
Steve Bennett, aye.
Tiffany Teely, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion passed unanimously, thank you very much. Mr. Tierney, that moves us to nine D on our agenda.
Nine D is Renewal Membership Agreement with the Connecticut River Valley Chamber of Commerce. That's the memo from Town Planner Matthew Bordeaux, recommending the renewal of the membership agreement between the Town of Hebron and the Connecticut River Valley Chamber of Commerce. The annual dues are two thousand and fifty dollars, and there's a proposed motion. We do have our Town Planner on here with us.
All right, let's put the motion out there. Claudia, would you be so kind?
Can you tell them what page it's on?
Oh, yes.
Well, he's not, but everybody's.
Sorry, didn't mean.
Move that the Board of Selectmen authorize Andrew J. Tierney, Town Manager, to renew perennial membership agreement with the Connecticut River Valley Chamber of Commerce until such time that town staff, the Hebron Economic Development Commission, or Hebron Board of Selectmen wish to revisit terms of the agreement.
Thank you very much. So before we learn for discussion, Matt, thank you for joining us. If you'd like to add some thoughts on this, we would welcome those.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a great deal to add. I would say that our relationship with the Connecticut River Valley Chamber is somewhat new. You know, this would be the first full year that we've had the relationship. The makeup of the Economic Development Commission has changed significantly during that timeframe. So we are going to be, you know, trying to take this, I, I don't want to say a little bit more seriously, but trying to get the most out of this relationship that we can going forward. My request in this case is that, you know, because this seems to be the direction the town and the Economic Development Commission would like to go moving forward, that the Board of Selectmen agree to, you know, allow this membership to repeat perennially, if that's the right terminology, until there's a reason for us to kind of redirect the, redirect the relationship.
Thank you, board. Discussion.
Yeah, I, I mean, I, I know this is kind of a new, a, a new agreement that we've gotten into because we had some, some concerns with our previous one. You know, I, I know it's been a short time and, and maybe, you know, one year isn't enough to be able to tell per se and, and, you know, that's fine if, if that's the answer. But the, I hate to use the word grievances, but the grievances that we had with our, our previous Chamber of Commerce, we're, we're not seeing any issues on that side and we're seeing more benefits. Is this, I, I mean, are you seeing this going forward as, as a lot more beneficial than some of the other options that are open to us?
Well, I can't articulate the, you know, whether this relationship is significantly different than the past. But, but you're not wrong when you say there were grievances with the previous relationship. And it, it appears that the resources available with this new chamber are a little bit more robust and the capacity of the staff is perhaps maybe distributed in a way that is. capacity of the staff is perhaps maybe distributed in a way that is a little bit more responsive and a little bit more. I guess I would just say consistent with, you know, the perceived goals of this kind of relationship. So we we are seeking that the chamber represents the town appropriately and per the direction of, you know, the Economic Development Commission and the goals of the Board of Selectmen, you know, generally. And we feel like this is the right decision to make, you know, for the town of Hebron.
Let's go to Tiffany. Um. So I'm not opposed to the partnership, but my concern is that in your memo, you talk about how the commission's going to work with the Chamber of Commerce to maintain a business inventory, provide communications with already existing Hebron-based businesses and build a strategy to promote their goods and services. How exactly do you and the commission plan on working with the Chamber of Commerce to recruit new businesses? Because I don't see that terminology reflected in your memo.
Well, I guess that would be a work in progress. I don't I don't have a I don't think that I have a strategy to articulate at the moment in response to that.
So I think that strategy is important and so I would encourage you and perhaps the commission to start providing us a strategy and some forward thinking about how we're going to recruit businesses and how we can perhaps leverage, you know, the Chamber of Commerce's resources. Thank you.
And I think that's great dialogue because we do have the the EDC coming in for our next meeting that's with a vision to see if it aligns with our vision, which is what you're talking about.
Yeah.
So within a couple of weeks, the next meeting, we're going to have that on the agenda. So that timing is perfect to bring that up because that's really what we should be talking about.
That is what we should be talking about.
Do we have a mutual vision that everyone's comfortable with? So that's great for next meet. You want to add something?
Yep. So I have some additional questions as well with respect to, you know, the twenty-five hundred dollar membership fee or two thousand fifty dollar membership fee. Just my question is the return of the investment. So the the head of the chamber states in her memo, I have been working with TCI for Maple Fest twenty twenty-five with Michelle and with Michelle and the business directory. I know that the business directory was mentioned like a year ago when the last time that the EDC presented here. Is there any updates on that? Has anybody anything happening with respect to this directory? And then my other question is says business visits with Steve Weir as well. Can you elaborate on that? What like what sort of meetings or is Mr. Weir having in town with respect to economic development?
Yeah, honestly, I do not. I cannot speak to the business meetings with Steve Weir. That's that's not part of you know, I don't I don't have that information. It's not. It's not in the capacity of, you know, representation from the Economic Development Commission. I believe that he is a member of the Board of Directors, if I'm not mistaken, of the Connecticut River Valley Chamber and a resident. So I guess that would make sense that there's a relationship there. In terms of the inventory, you know, again, it's a work in progress. We've been working with the Sessors Office. We do have a list. It needs to be updated. We need, you know, the intent here is to produce an active list that has the appropriate contact information. The list that we have has been distributed, well, portions of it have been delegated to different members. Again, this is a volunteer group, so you know, we are working our way through it. So our our goal, I think ideally, is to produce something similar to what the town of Marlboro has on their website. So it's available to, you know, not just us in terms of distributing information, but to the public as well to know what's available in, you know, in terms of goods and services in town. So again, it's it's a work in progress.
Okay, I just want one other follow-up question or request that I would have. If the EDC is going to present to the Board of Selectmen in the coming meetings or in the near future, I would like to have a little bit more clarity on with these points that are made in the memo from the Chamber of Commerce. Like I'd like to see your report back and I would like to see some more details around the business visits that the chamber is planning or have already completed. I'd like to know about that, too.
Okay, good track. Get that information for you.
Anything else from the board?
Would the other members feel more comfortable if we just did an annual renewal instead of ready on one and revisit it at a later time? Andy had a
Oh, Andy, go ahead.
So in full transparency, the chairman of EDC stepped down abruptly about a year ago. And, you know, Matt's got a lot of hats as the town planner. We do a lot of stuff with the ARPA stuff. So to be quite transparent and honest, we haven't really put a hundred percent into this relationship in the first year. So we know we got to do better. We think it's the right team to be with right now versus some of the things we did in the past didn't really pan out. No, we need to do better. We were looking for support to keep our membership and and get the information that is being asked for tonight. Get the chamber in more into Hebron and, you know, let them know what we're looking for them to do for us to benefit us. As far as a Steve Weir thing, I don't have any information on that either. I wasn't aware of that. So I we would have to get that information, which we will do for you.
So what you're saying is the EDC does not have a chair currently. So there's really
They do.
No, Michelle Nickerson stepped up, but she was new to the position and, you know, Ann Wick was the chair. He had resigned for whatever reasons is worth, I don't know, anything like that. But yeah, there's some areas. We're kind of spread thin and I just want to be, you know, open and honest that we need to do better and foster that relationship with that chamber a lot better in the upcoming year than we have been. So that's that's it in a nutshell.
So, oh, Claudia, so that's, and I appreciate what Michelle has done. She did reach out to me, I may have mentioned in the previous meetings, to say she really wants to make a stronger connection with the Board of Selectmen, get a shared vision, really open up the dialogue. And so she did prepare a document, which you'll see the vision statement effectively that you will see prior to next meeting in preparation for her then joining us. So, yeah, and that's it's sort of that's the start almost, it feels like, of of reinvigorating this path forward and then addressing some of the things you you talked about.
Yeah, and I think that's something that I'd really like to see in now that ARPA is sort of behind us, the bulk of the work, which I know it took a lot of time and energy in twenty-four, but in twenty-five, like just turn our eyes more towards economic development and have, I think, us as a board should be a little bit more in the loop on that. Make sure things are moving along in the right direction. I think that, you know, by annual or reports back is not enough, in my opinion. I think we need to
Quarterly.
Maybe quarterly.
Next week.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
So, but to Keith's point, I want to I want to stay on that in terms of your suggestion that because we have some uncertainties about the the strength of this relationship going forward, not a criticism, but just it's in its infancy. Would we want to renew the membership? Is it an annual contract? Andy, how does it work?
Wait, wait, it was the first year and then it came up for another renewal. So we had it for a one-year contract. I believe this is doing the same thing, right, Don?
It's a
First one was for a one-year term. So this was for a renewal and Matt is recommending that it be automatically renewed unless there's concerns on the part of the staff, EDC, or the selectmen, but it doesn't have to be that.
Okay, but so maybe I like that suggestion, maybe because of some of these uncertainties, we we make an amendment to have it be annual, at least until we're all comfortable that it should be, you know, sort of a perennial perpetual sort of arrangement. Would you are you suggesting an amendment to the motion?
Well, I I mean, I'm more than happy to to make an amendment to the motion. I just I was getting some hesitancy from some of the board members and and I think that that's a good way for us to, you know, give all parties involved, to Andy's point, kind of a chance to work out some of the kinks because a year is, it flies by.
Yeah.
You know.
Yes.
And and I don't want to just, you know, throw things out, especially when Matt is saying that, you know, it's a lot better situation than the one that we are in. I do know that Hebron is in kind of a unique place geographically where we could be part of different chambers of commerce. So there's a couple of options out there. It's not like we're smack dab in the center of one territory. But, you know, maybe an annual renewal until we feel a a higher level of comfort would be more amicable to the rest of the the board.
Yep.
Okay, I I'm seeing
This is saying annual due, so
Oh, yeah, but it
The motion is perennial, so the motion is not to come before the board, just to keep moving.
We wouldn't see it again unless there was a problem.
Right. And so we're looking for one more year.
Yep.
All right, so I so
So I would move that the Board of Selectmen authorize Andrew J. Tierney, town manager, to renew the membership agreement with the Connecticut River Valley Chamber of Commerce for the next year. I think we already have a motion on the floor.
There'll be a friendly amendment to remove the perennial membership to
Annual membership.
So
Did the motion.
So Claudia did the motion. He's suggesting a friendly amendment to remove the the perennial reference to an annual note or an annual reference until, look, that's it. So, Donna, we, I just stumbled through that, but
Okay, got it. Claudia, are you okay with making that a friendly amendment?
Yes.
Okay, so let's move to a vote in recognition of the proposed motion with the friendly amendment that's just been brought forward. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. But please note if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. Motion as amended, passed unanimously. Thank you very much. Thank you, Matt, so much for joining us and providing that context.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Tierney.
Item nine E. Yes, sir. Open the Board of Selectmen. Look at this. Do you schedule a special town meeting for the Department of Pollock's project design funding? As stated earlier in the year review, you're going to be conducting the interviews with the companies that were selected. Our Pollock's actually many will soon be conducting interviews of four architectural firms for the DPW project design and the making a recommendation to the selectmen. I'm sorry, the selected firm, any amount of funding needed. The special town meeting will be required to consider approval of supplemental appropriation. The selectmen and the DPWAC should discuss the timing of the approval process. Do we have a date in mind for that? Are we suggesting a date?
Okay, so let's keep it
Hoping to do it in April.
Okay, so let's keep it as all business. We'll connect with probably Mr. Steiner is probably the appropriate person and we'll connect with and bring the two parties together, then we'll bring back a recommended date for next meeting. Okay, is that all that?
It is. There's a few things that need to happen before we can
So maybe it's not next meeting. We'll leave.
Well, we need approvals, supplemental appropriation approvals by the Board of Selectmen and the Board of Finance. And we need to schedule the special town meeting and possibly consider a public hearing before that to try to inform the public. So there's a lot of steps that need to happen before we get to town.
All right, so we'll leave it as all business and we'll keep moving.
Yeah, we were still thinking, we were thinking somewhere in April. We want to make sure we can get started first.
Okay.
And to follow your schedule.
Which was aggressive, I know.
Get somewhat close to that.
It'll be Todd's fault. It'll be his schedule. Okay, thank you for that. So that'll stay on that and we'll coordinate with the appropriate entities and people to make sure that that timeline is articulated and we have that put out on the schedule when appropriate. So thank you for that. Okay, so now that moves us to nine F, which is our draft agenda. And anything you wish to bring before or add to the agenda, please take a look at what's on the agenda and then bring anything else to the town managers office for additions or discussion. Any other new business, Mr. Tierney?
Gradually.
The board. Okay. And it moves to the ten agenda, which is the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are considered to be routine in nature, which the board may not need to discuss individually, may be voted on as a group. Any board member who wishes to discuss a particular item in this section may request the chair to remove it for later discussion in a separate vote if necessary. Does anyone wish to move something to separate something or discuss anything that's been presented?
No.
Mr. Larson, would you please read the motion for our consent agenda?
I'm not sure. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the following consent agenda items and motions contained therein as if individually adopted. And we would have the approval of the minutes of February twentieth, two thousand twenty-five regular meeting and the approval of the tax refund as shown.
Thank you so much. Didn't see any indication of need for additional discussions. We'll move to a vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, or please note if you wish to abstain, Dan.
Dan Larson, aye.
Tiffany Teal, aye.
Claudia Riley, aye.
Peter Casper, aye. That motion passed unanimously. The easel reports were just section eleven A H M E Services. I do not have anything. Tiffany, Hebron Board of Ed.
Did not.
Thank you, Board of Finance, Mr. Larson.
Nothing really. I mean, they were discussing after our Board of Selectmen's meeting, some of the different funds, but basically everything we heard was what we heard at that combination meeting.
Yeah, okay, workshop. Thank you. Land acquisitions. Thank you. Brand Board of Ed, Claudia.
Nothing to report tonight.
You so much. This moves to the section twelve, which is public comment. I will just make a note if anyone is joining us late, the reference to my earlier comments of the structure of public comment. If you see that again, please let us know. But if not, I'll move forward to solicit any public comment. Donna, is there anybody online?
Nothing. I'm lying.
Holly. Oh, excuse me. I'm not supposed to know your name. Go ahead, come on. Name and address for the record.
Hi, Holly Habbit, ninety-eight East Street. However, we're here for the Town Center Project then as a resident. So a couple of meetings ago, there was some miscommunication from the Chamber of Commerce to Matt Bordeaux in reference to them working with us on Maple Festival. I didn't address you guys at that meeting because I thought I'm just going to address it with Matt. It's fine. It's cool. And so I sent Matt an email and I just let him know, you know, we have not been in collaboration with the chamber for Maple Festival. I'm not sure what she's referring to as TCI for Maple Festival. I can tell you there's nobody else except for TTCP involved with Maple Festival. If she's referring to TTCP and confusing us with somebody named PCI, obviously she's not working with us because she doesn't know our name. And I'm cool with the chamber being a member of Hebron and representing Hebron. I think that it's great as a firm or business person. I think the more help that you can get, the better off you are. I just don't want there to be any misguided information out there and I'm not going to let anybody steal my my volunteers' thunders. Sorry.
No, no, I mean, that's indicative of where we are with this group, which is not where we need to be yet. Not with Town Center Project, but with the chamber, right?
January evening. So it's dated, but true.
But it is, yeah, it's still still in effect. Great. They are sponsoring the skillet tossing for us, but they are not some any different than tents or Rainy Orthodox or Picture Perfect downtown, you know. Yeah. But anyhow, thank you very much.
So today, there hasn't been like a a other assistance rep other than a sponsorship for them.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Donna, in the chat, can you just answer Rosalie's question that she was indeed appointed? She just wants to make sure.
And I apologize to her. I didn't steer on there till after.
Yeah, it was after, yeah. Just want to make sure we answer her.
We should note that she does need to come into the town hall.
Yes.
And thank you for your volunteers.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Rosalie, did you wish
Thank you so much. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any additional public comment? Last chance, last call for that. Donna, I know no one online. No one in person.
Move to adjourn.
Oh, we have a motion, which is not, normally it looks to the left, but a motion was made. You'll have to deal with him later, but he did make a
I got you, Sarah.
Mr. Pettit, Mr. Pettit. You can second it.
No, he can find someone else to second it.
Motion is adjourned. Thank you all. And thank you.